Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the special meeting of February 23rd, 2015. At this time, I'll ask everyone to stand. Move to the South. At this time, I'll call Reverend Patillo for to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Reverend Paul.
My pleasure, Reverend Paul. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you see this? Reverend Patillo, mission statement?
The mission of the Portman Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Thank you, Reverend Paul. At this time, I'll call the board clerk for attendance. Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Mr. Parent?
Present.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Present.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you very much. I call the board's attention to item number one, the roll call vote. Your approval of the agenda, your pleasure. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and proper, second that we adopt the agenda is given in discussion. With that, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
Mr. Janus?
Okay, thank you. Item number two, asks for a roll call vote, and that is consideration of a contract for legal services. Your pleasure. Move for approval.
Second.
It's moved and proper, second that we'll give consideration for this agreement for legal services. It's been a long time coming. Any discussion on the matter? It's a bad one there. I'm sorry.
The only question, the only question I had was, I know that we discussed it earlier, Mr. Steele, that the compensation is for an agreed upon number of hours. At what point do we go into, I'm gonna call it overtime, because I'm not exactly sure, and can that be reflected in the contract? Can we amend the contract so that we get a specific set of hours here, or is, or am I always full?
Actually, what it covers is a set number of school board meetings and other normal administrative functions, no matter what the hours are. So, that fee covers all those requirements. The only time a special fee of an hour degree comes into play is all of a sudden if the attorney has to represent us in court and do litigation and things like that. And so, those are considered non-routine events, and then we would start being charged right now.
I just wanted to be clear. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
Mr. Janus?
Okay, thank you. Item number three, roll call voters, consideration of a contract for food services equipment, your pleasure. Move for approval.
Second.
It's moved and proper, second that we adopt contract for food services equipment. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
Mr. Janus?
Okay. Item number four, discussion of the superintendent's proposed 2015-16 operating budget. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bracy. Mr. Steele, I will call on you this time, if you will, to present the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. In your iPad or in your PowerPoint, you have a PowerPoint that I'm gonna do right now. And we're gonna start off with some background, but you need to be a journalist.
You see your energy problem that needs to restart, and it just happened, so I apologize.
Well, I think most of the agenda package of funding, I can maybe start by going through the agenda. Your agenda, we're gonna talk quickly, there's a slide on our mission base, and then there's several slides on the demographic and academic trends for Portsmouth Public Schools. We're gonna talk about the key dates that we're looking at for the budget process right now. We're gonna look at the state and local revenue outlook as it, as we see it right now. We're gonna provide the budget highlights and our statements of needs that the administration feels that we need to progress Portsmouth Public Schools. And we're gonna talk in that respect about the general operating fund and also the CIP, the capital improvement plan. And then we're just gonna summarize the superintendent's proposed budget overview.
While we're waiting for this, we wanna try to let, get through the total presentation and, and hold, hopefully you can hold your questions and ask them at the end. Presentation, I think, is around, right around a half hour, forty minutes long, so we wanna try to get the whole presentation in. It's about thirty pages, and then come with the board question, and that way, we won't lose this train of thought. Hopefully, we can cover it like that. That's what we're gonna try to do.
So, I'm gonna go through these slides very quickly. As long as the computer doesn't shut down. Next slide. Again, that's, that's the agenda. Next slide. Again, I wanted to reiterate, what you just heard was our mission statement, Greg. And some of you may not be aware that the school board has a comprehensive strategic plan, and it's really a ten-year plan, and several of the vision statements I've highlighted here, and those were, those along with the other statements are ones that guided the formation of the budget. Next slide. One of the key performance indicators, of course, is accreditation. And so, this gives you a history of where Portsmouth Public Schools has evolved with accreditation since 2003. And you can see, we hit a hundred percent back in '90, '10. Then there were several new standards, starting with social studies and then math, and a new accreditation requirement of graduation was levying on schools in 2011, '12, and then the year before, we had reading and science, 2012 and '13. Right now, for our current year, and again, accreditation is based on the report, the testing from the year before, and we stand at thirty-two percent of those schools that are fully or provisionally accredited. Next slide. One of the factors that drives, especially state funding, is ADM, average daily membership, which takes a look at students attending the school on a, on a daily basis. And you can see, we had a low point in 2013. Over the years, even before that, the trend has been down, but then it started leveling off. And now, we're starting to ramp up, it appears. The figure for '14-'15 is January, and as you may know, the March figure is the one that drives the final state revenue figure. So, we actually go almost three-quarters of fiscal, through the fiscal year before we even really know our final revenue figure. But that's why it's important for us to track ADM through the year, so we can see what the variation is of what was budgeted versus what could end up being the final revenue figure for the state in March. So, that's, that's why sometimes at the end, end of the year, we're scrambling either on the plus side or the minus side to adjust to that state revenue figure. And right now, we use Welton Cooper for projecting what our enrollment is in the future, and they look at enrollment trends, they get a lot of demographic data from the city, and they put together a model that they try to predict what the enrollment's gonna be for the year. And what we have predicting is fourteen thousand two eleven. Next slide. Every two years, on the biennial, they put out a composite index. Again, this is a reflection of a local municipality or county to fund education, and this shows our regional districts, and you'll, you'll see that Portsmouth has the lowest composite index, which reflects the lowest capability within the region for locality to fund education. What happens then is that the direct aid formulas, et cetera, from the state are adjusted for that to provide a little bit of additional state funding based on that. Next slide. Another factor that impacts how we deliver educational enforcement is taking a look at those students that are disadvantaged, and this is reflected in our free and reduced meals, those students are eligible. And you can see through the years that the percentage has been increasing in Portsmouth. Excellent. And if you look at it regionally, you'll see that we're one of the three schools, along with Portsmouth and Norfolk, that have the highest free and reduced meal percentages in the area. And in the state as well. This slide is just a quick pie chart, just to show you where we're getting funds for the school district. Again, between state sales tax and state school funds, we're on the direct aid, that comprises almost two-thirds of the funding we get to run the school district. City funds is, is about a third, and then federal and other funds are also. Next slide. And here's where we spend money, and as you can see, about three-quarters plus percent is, is in instruction. Next slide. One of the things we look at every year, and we, some people get the idea that we have a lot of money, that we have a lot of discretion on where we can spend the money. But as you can see from here, that if you make some assumptions on what's discretionary and non-discretionary, and if you say, at least initially, that payroll was non-discretionary, and that could be argued in the long term, but if it's non-discretionary. And then you look at, on the non-payroll side, if you look at utilities, if you look at insurance payments, if you look at our payments to CSEP and, and the city, et cetera, that takes up about sixteen percent of the, the non-payroll cost. And we're left only with about three percent of discretionary funds that, that we have to manipulate. Next slide. This is a, this is a slide showing what has happened to classroom teachers over the years. Now, a lot of this decrease is that we did have some earlier ADM changes in the, in the beginning years, but also, we were trying to become leaner with, with the budget constraints that were levied. And you'll see on the next slide that, that our funding overall dropped dramatically. We were supported a little bit by federal stimulus funds, but because of that drop, we had to decrease the number of staff that we have. Next slide. Payroll is one of the big things that drives our budget, and I wish I had slightly bigger depiction of this graph. But this graph is actually from the Virginia Beach budget proposal. And one of the things they wanted to show is that Virginia Beach is slightly lower than every, everybody else. And it showed Portsmouth, number one, at entry level on teacher salary, and then pretty, pretty high on, on the average going across. But I, I would argue that this is a little bit misleading, because if you look at where they're taking salary figures of the entry level, five years, ten years, fifteen years, et cetera, they're just asking, looking at the salary tables that each of the districts produces. And I will point out that we haven't had a step raise in a while. So, what happens is that first figure keeps on sliding over, and what'll happen is that even though on this, and you, and if you assume that you got a step every year, yeah, we would be in good shape. But we haven't funded a step every year. So, that isn't reflective of what a teacher is making in five or ten years, fifteen years. It's actually a lot less, and what I'll show in subsequent slides, is we're actually, if you, if you look at average teacher salary, it's the lowest in the region. Next slide. So, let's look at, from VDOE salaries reports, if you can compare all the other districts. Again, this is starting salaries, and just as I indicated, Portsmouth is at the top. And I understand that was an intentional move on Portsmouth Public Schools' part to try to entice teachers to come to Portsmouth right from the get-go. So, even though our total salary package may not have been, have been as good of an incentive that we wanted, we wanted to get them at least in the door and, and hopefully retain teachers. But that was an intentional move, and we just have right now just a small percentage of our teachers that are new every year. Next slide. We think this is a more accurate depiction of, because it looks at all teachers within the districts. So, it takes, it looks at average teacher salaries in all the districts, and you'll see that Portsmouth is actually the lowest as far as an average teacher salary. Next slide. Of course, we're tracking what all the other districts are doing, and this is just a short synopsis. And I'll, and I'll probably refer back to this, because what's in the budget and being proposed are numbers that I'll talk about later. But I also wanted to indicate that all the districts are looking for filling a shortfall. All the districts are looking to give raises. All the districts, and the raised percentages raised right now between 1.5 to 2.5, or five percent in Virginia Beach. On health insurance, three of the districts are looking to increase the employee contribution to health insurance, one is looking for a decrease, and of course, our proposal is looking for no change at this point. Next slide. So, here we are in the budget process, and we're providing more information on the superintendent's budget tonight. We do have a, a general assembly, if everything goes to schedule, we'll be finalizing the House and Senate versions. We were looking at both versions to see what's gonna come out as far as it applies to Portsmouth and K-12, and we'll probably know by the end of the year. The public hearing, of course, is this Thursday on the superintendent's budget proposal. On March 3rd, we have a joint meeting with the city concerning the budget. And then, March 26th, the school board will make some decisions on priorities based on what we see for revenue and, and other factors, and forward to the city. Then the city goes through their, their process. Next slide. There are, there are, there is some legislation that we're following that may impact us as far as unfunded mandates. There's a couple that require maybe some additional training. There is one, and that's at the General Assembly now. I will point out that there is a, some legislation at the federal level that may impact urban and disadvantaged school districts, and that's some legislation regarding federal Title I portability. And they're talking about changing the way Title I is funded, that it may follow the student versus funding based on the economics of a district or a particular school. And we think, and most urban school districts, think that would be a detriment to, to how we get funded. Next slide. So, let's look at the budget of revenue trend. If you look back in 2008, '09, and that was at the apex of, of our funding, we were at a hundred fifty-one million. And again, none of these figures are adjusted for inflation. So, if you put in an inflation figure, the differences would be a little bit more dramatic. You can see with, with the stacked bar that has a darker blue color, or purple, or whatever, that, that was when stimulus funds were given to localities and school districts to help assist during the recession. But you can see still, even with that, that the funding dropped off dramatically, and districts had to do some draconian efforts to, to adapt to that. 2012 and '13, the federal surplus went away, and there were some adjustments. And you can see that for '12, '13, '13, '14, and '14, '15, the revenue, except for '13, '14, has kinda leveled out. For '15, '16, that figure right there, I'll point out that figure later, that is based on two things. One is, it's based on the governor's proposed budget back in December, not the House/Senate versions, which are slightly better for us. But we're taking the most conservative look at that revenue. The second thing it, it is factoring in for discussion purposes is level funding from the city. So, that's where that 140.463 comes in. Next slide. Just gives a little bit of a summary of what's going on with the state and city revenue. I'll point out this figure right now. If you compare '14-'15 original figure to the '15-'16 governor budget, the state has given us about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand more dollars, but primarily, that's because of our increased ADM. If you look at the, the state revenue per ADM, it's actually gone down slightly. So, we're getting nine hundred and seventy-five thousand more dollars by the governor's budget, but actually per ADM. It's actually. And then, we look at the city revenue, what it was, and what the city revenue per ADM is, which is about thirty-seven hundred. Right now, there's question marks on the city revenue. We're not sure where they're gonna fall on city revenue. Next slide. Another factor, a lot of school districts peg the amount of local revenue to a, they have a revenue sharing arrangement that may be a percentage of the total revenue. And there have been discussions between the city and the school, doing that type of thing. And this shows, even though we don't have a sharing agreement, and no, it's been discussed, this, this shows how the percent has changed over time. So, you can see in 2008, '09, that it was upwards of thirty-four percent. But even though generally, they've given us level funding, the percent, as a percent of city revenue, we've slowly started decreasing. So, now we're down to what we project to be about twenty-seven percent, if you consider just level funding. So, we put together the budget, and there's a lot of assumptions put into the budget. But I wanted to highlight some things that were put into the original projection right off the bat. And you can see that we put in no increases to employee health insurance share. We did wanna preserve at a minimum, not increase the ratio of teacher, student ratio, or student-teacher ratio, but preserve it. No increases to class size. Homeless transportation, which was an issue last year, that's been built into, into the base budget. Some discussions about the athletic ban. All those programs that were on the table last year before the city gave us the additional funding that was requested, are built into the budget. So, like Starbase, Golden Rollman, Summer School, Freshman Orientation, New Directions, Port Town Magic, all those projects that were previously on, on the table last year, we're not putting, we didn't put them on the table. We've actually embedded them into the initial budget projection. Next slide. So, what's changed since last year's budget? One is, health insurance has gone up about seven percent, which is a lot less than it was in the past. There were double-digit increases in the past, and this, and the trend now looks a lot less. And so, we're looking at about a six hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase. Health insurance for part-time employees. As you know, according to the Affordable Care Act, any part-time employee that is averaging over thirty hours over a specified period of time, the employer has to offer, if they already have a plan, their benefit plan. So, in the event that, we have approximately eight employees that fall into that category. I think they're mostly long-term teacher substitutes, et cetera. And so, if they avail themselves of taking our insurance, we're approximately giving them an additional ten thousand to, to support their employees. So, that's in there. As you know, also, we, the school board approved a mid-year, actually, it was approved back in November 23rd, a two percent raise for employees. That wasn't in the base budget for previous year, so that had to be carried over in factoring out what we're gonna do with this year's budget. Next slide. Okay, reductions. One of the things we're looking at is closing the DACH. And besides New Directions and Uplift, there are some CSEP classrooms in there. And we feel, based on utilities and other savings, we would save about ninety-eight thousand dollars. More importantly, they have over a twenty-year-old HVAC system that our, our maintenance folks and, and outside, Energy Consultant basically has said, hey, this is gonna fail. And the initial estimate for replacing that is four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, we're, we're trying to avoid that catastrophe, basically, and, and look at, at moving out of that facility. The, the other reason is, and I'll talk at, at the end about CIP, CIP is something that does not look like it's getting favorable funding from the city. So, even if we stayed there, we're not sure it could be funded out of the city CIP. We did look at reducing across the board, and this was not to schools. I think last, the last presentation, we had a million. We took the schools part out of it, and it, and, and now it's just seven hundred thousand across the board to discretionary, non-payroll, and trying to build some capacity for those other school board priorities. And I have a blank there for healthcare costs on-site nurse program. This is something that we'll probably have a presentation to the board later. But we're looking at the model Chesapeake Public Schools has for setting up an employee pharmacy. And it also, they're looking at setting up an employee nurse program, which has saved them, according to their figures, not only millions of dollars to the district, but also, it's reducing co-pays and things like that for employees. So, it looks like it's a win-win. And the employees supposedly are raving about this. And it's something that we're looking at, and we're trying to nail down a specific figure. Again, the earliest that could impact this probably is one January 2016. Even that is probably an aggressive schedule to get it started, but I put that as a place marker, as some significant potential reductions to our budget in pursuing that initiative. Other revenue increases, we're looking to close the print shop. As previously, it's been losing money since 2010, and a lot of it has to do with business that is no longer there because of computerization, et cetera. And before it loses its cash balance, we wanted to close it, recoup it, and use those funds for, again, school board priorities going into the next year. Medicaid maximization. We still have a blank figure there, and we're trying to fill that in. But we're, we're pursuing an initiative where we've always requested and gotten a nominal amount for Medicaid reimbursement for those services we, we provide to Medicaid-eligible students. We understand, though, that we haven't been requesting the full reimbursements that can be required. I just got an email, by the way, this afternoon from George Wilson, the city attorney that's talking, that gave me a Richmond Times/Dispatch article, that in Liko schools, they weren't even requesting Medicaid, and now they're requesting Medicaid, and they're going from a reimbursement of ninety-seven thousand to almost a million dollars in reimbursement for each more revenue. So, we're, we're looking, we, we already had started that a few months ago, and, and are identifying those things. It might be a little bit of an administrative burden, but we think the return on that investment is gonna significantly provide some additional reimbursement. Credit card payment rebate. As you know, we have a credit card program. We use the state contract for that. And that state contract provides a one and a half percent percent, approximately one and a half percent rebate on those items we pay vendors with a credit card. We've been emphasizing that more and more, so if a vendor says they take a credit card, we ask them, well, we'll pay you with a credit card instead of a hard check. And right now, our rebates are double from last year, and we're over forty thousand this year. We expect them to continue to go up as we emphasize those types of payments. So right now, we're paying almost for a position just with rebates from the credit card. Next slide. Now I'm going to talk about quality improvement recommendations. And all the ones here are in the same priority order that was presented to the school board last year and that they had in last year's budget book that were left unfunded. The first one is the COLA increase. The second one, and the fourth bullet, the numbers of additional instructional assistance and instructional support, which are teachers, the numbers are slightly different from last year, and that's been in discussion with Dr. Taylor, Dr. Bracy, and we've been trying to hone in on the exact requirement there. The holiday pay, which we have discussed, additional op-staff, and last year, they were asking for eighteen more. We've kind of refined that figure down. Next slide. Again, the first five bullets are ones that were in there from prior years. After the dotted line, these are new ones that have come up since last year. The first one is the increase the bus driver monitor standard work week of six hundred thousand. I put in parentheses to help understand that. This is equivalent to a twenty percent increase to benefits, but I also want to point out that the employee will not see any, that's not a net increase to their pay. What is happening here is they're asking for an increased employer contribution to VRS and sick pay based on adjusting the standard work week from, I believe, five and a quarter to six and a half. So is that correct? Yeah, to six and a half. So in that case, they're accruing sick leave at a higher rate, and they're accruing the VRS contribution at a higher rate. And it's fair because it's going to reflect their actual work and the standard work, the standard work week and what they're actually doing to be closer. Next slide. Talked about a step increase, and a lot of employees have talked about step increase, and it's talked about earlier. That's why in that earlier slide, there's, it's misconstrued that we're making, you know, a lot of money through the different years of teacher, but if you're not giving steps, you end up being the lowest in the year. Talked about additional CSEP trade slots for general ed to handle those situations that we currently don't have maybe some alternative solutions for students. We talked about a PIO position and also establishing a grants writer position. Again, these four and the one before were not in the previous budget submission, and these are new for this year. Next slide. So going back to the revenue, this is revenue, and again, this is what we're expecting from the state. This is what level funding would be from the city, and then federal funds and other funds. So again, based on the governor's submitted budget, we're looking at a hundred and forty million in, we're not proposing, but what's on the table right now for revenue. We should know more next week after the House/Senate. I will know even further as the House and Senate versions get meshed with the governor's budget. Next slide. Okay, let's look at expenditures. On expenditures, and based on all of what you saw previously on the budget, the must funds, the reductions, and those quality improvements, if all of those were funded at that current rate, we're at a hundred and forty-six million for the general fund. So you can see the delta is approximately six million. Next slide. And of course, the general fund fits into all the other funds that we have, and you can see what those other funds are. So our total budget for the school district is a hundred and seventy-four million as proposed. Next slide. And now I'm going to talk about capital improvement. We aren't really getting those big tires for school buses. But I would like to be serious about capital improvement because we talked about the general fund, but another big aspect of what we get to support education is in the capital improvement program. And this basically covers those major investment programs that, to qualify for the program, you have to be, first of all, over fifty thousand. And as you know, the city funds those, and so the city requests a submission of our projects, goes through a matrix, and then decides, based on their funding availability, how far they can fund those projects. And this is of concern. Last year, we had eighteen projects submitted, or we requested, valued at about nine million dollars. Of those, the city funded seven, but you can see they only funded a rate of one point seven million. Most of those projects, they only funded for the engineering work, not for the actual project itself, it was just to get the architect and engineer going on roofs and HVAC systems. So other than school buses and the Wilson Fire Line, I mean, most of that stuff is just getting the engineer. For fifteen, sixteen, the number of CIP projects has ballooned to forty-three. The value of the CIP projects requested is fourteen million. We don't know where they're going to stick, where the city's going to stand, but we know that they've made, they've had discussion that they can't incur any more debt. So if they can't incur any more debt, the question's going to be, well, where's this funding coming from? So the fear here is that we may have a lot of CIP projects, we may have a lot of infrastructure needs, et cetera, but then our funding source is non-existent. So there may be a requirement to say, when we can't afford it, you're going to have to make a decision on pulling operating funds to cover some of these. And so the number that I gave you doesn't include any facility stuff. So if that number balloons, then the deficit's going to be even lower. Next slide. Again, these are the projects that are currently, in the fourteen, fifteen, the current year projects. And I gave you a list before. Next slide. The same one, the senior package from last time, that's the same part of the list that's on this, but it's changed. Next slide. So the next thing is, you know, there'll be a public hearing, the school board will approve the budget, and we'll work with the city on the best path to improve it. I'll go back to the CIP. We have requested a meeting with the city, including the city CFO, to talk about what solutions there are for CIP projects. And with that, that ends my presentation. I don't know if I was past thirty minutes, but I'm ready to end.
Okay, questions and answers. We can do it one of two ways. We can, one, hand raise or just go around the table, see if there's any contributions or questions. Okay, I'll start over there with Dr. Whitaker to my left.
Okay. I have a question. You mentioned Title I, Port Town Magic. Is that legislation on the table right now?
Yeah, there's a House bill for that. In fact, there was a press release from the Council of Great City Schools on it, which I can forward to all the school board members.
So it's still in the House?
Yes. Did it, Dr. Whitaker?
All right, no.
One of the questions I had was, our ADM right now for fiscal year fifteen is sitting fourteen, two ninety-four. What was the magic number that you put in? How many are we over? Did you put a, what was your, what was your number that we put in? And apparently, we passed it.
Oh, yeah, we passed it. And you tend to be conservative starting the year because you don't want to be all of a sudden in a deficit year. So the figure that we used was the state figure in the Walton Cooper number that they were forecasting for us, which I believe was fourteen thousand seventy-one. Does that sound accurate? So it's pretty significant.
And you mentioned, and I'm going to my home finances for a minute, so I apologize, but I know that we do Amazon Prime because we get a lot of stuff shipped free to us. When we purchase with Staples or Office Depot or whoever it is, have we looked at saving through shipping? Because you did mention the credit card rebate at forty thousand dollars, and that is, that is a good chunk of change just for that. But when you take twenty-one, twenty-three schools and you add constant shipping prices over time, that adds up, too. Have we looked at doing, can we do, like an Amazon Prime for the division? Because you can get things free shipping there. And I'm just asking because I know that shipping costs add up.
Well, we certainly look at that every time a contract's negotiated. In fact, with a lot of our contracts, the shipping is free. And we also looked at prompt payment discounts. So if the vendor says, hey, I'll give you a one and a half percent discount if you pay within ten days, we try to take advantage of those the best we can. So we get additional discounts based on what's negotiated on payment.
Okay. And when we go back to the staffing page, I had a hard time reading the end of it. When we look at additional staff, we're looking for ten elementary school teachers and three middle school reading specialists. Is that what I saw? I just want to make sure I was clear on that slide.
Yes. Ten elementary school teachers, three middle school reading specialists, six life science teachers, seven grade teachers.
Okay. All right, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Remington?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stiles wanted to give a reiteration for the DAC closing. You said that we would actually place all those employees in other areas within the district. You don't want to lose.
The programs aren't going away. We're just, we're just getting rid, we're trying to get rid of, of the facility footprint and give us some cost savings in utilities and facility maintenance and things like that.
And what about the print shop?
The print shop, our plan, our plan is that we're not going to give anybody a pink slip that will find them a job within operations or some other facility, and we're very confident on that.
Okay. And with the additional instructional support, is that pretty much an acronym, as I tell you, as far as what we really are evaluating as far as additional teachers?
Yes. The best of our ability and looking at what we did last year and transitioning into this year with the budget, yes, these are our priority, these are, this is priority. And that would put us pretty much in line. We are in line as the government wants to continue with stronger support to the schools.
And Mr. Stiles, I should give you the latest before I got onto the floor, but for the additional, the finance support staff, what does the asking include with this?
For that one position in finance, basically, that's for an additional grant accountant for that particular position. And the other operations positions would mostly be bus drivers and monitors and stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Okay, going to the slide for teacher salaries, starting salaries, bachelor's,硕士, Virginia Department of Education. So in two thousand fifteen, if you looked at that slide, it shows Portsmouth, the entry is the top of all the schools in the region. Is that correct?
What we went through this morning.
Do you want to start it, Stiles?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so we're at the top starting, but then when you go to look at the average, because of the, you're saying because of the lack of step increases or whatever, we're at the bottom, just.
It's combination of step, a lack of step increases, but also within the pay table, which is based on grade and steps, the step differences may be different than other districts where they have bigger, bigger amounts for each step that they take versus us. So this average takes into account all of that.
So if a person is just looking at the slides and you look at this one for Portsmouth, you would say we were in good shape?
Yep, but we're not.
But we're not.
Because it's assuming that they were getting step increases along the way, but we're not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Lael?
Thank you. As far as the homeless, is there, is there an increase year over year?
There was an increase in the past two years, fairly significant, and it's basically started to level off, although it's just a slight increase.
Just a slight, okay. And then going back to the twenty-four teachers and so forth, I do recall at the last school board meeting, I think, names are slipping mine, I've got Alka-Seltzer plus on brain, that it was mentioned that at least we needed three to four math teachers, and I'm not seeing that reflected in this, in this list.
Dr. Taylor, maybe explain question. Those positions are already funded, they're just vacant, so we're just, so we don't have to have those, they're already there.
And then the transportation costs, there seems to be a big increase or a jump from six point three million to eight point seven nine million. What is being reflected there as far as the jump?
I might have to get back to you on that. I know all these categories have a lot of different function codes, and some of them directly may affect transportation as we know it, but it may.
And then I know we talked about the athletic and the ban increase, or over the last several months, we've talked a lot about equipment and uniforms and so forth, and then we were talking about the ban issue with regards to Norcom. If I remember correctly, when they had came and they had spoken and so forth, it really had to do with the fact of, it seemed that they were having to come up with their own fundraising to rent those buses and so forth. Yeah, exactly. In this budget, as far as to funding the athletic and ban increase allocations, what exactly are we funding?
Well, let me answer that this way. We're looking at the athletic ban requirements, or it's basically a two-prong attack. One is, at the last school board action, which approved the reappropriation, that included providing funding to a lot of the backlog items for athletics and ban. Second thing, on a continual basis in the budget, previously there was, there were no allocations for athletics and ban. It's that they relied on whatever available ending year faculty was. And the decision was that that's not a way, that's not a way to budget for a program or plan for a program because you can't rely on that. So starting last year, we started building a passive move in the budget room, specifically budgeted funds for athletic and ban. This year, we augmented that to even higher. We're looking at a multi-year phased increase to the level that is what we think is reasonable and also maybe comparable to other districts on how they fund the group. We're trying to tackle that deficiency.
And then my last question. If I'm understanding you correctly, a hundred and forty-six million, which right now, give or take, the state and level funding with the city and whatnot, so for an additional six million, this is going to cover all, all must funds and all quote-quote quality improvements, meaning one and a half percent COLA increase, the additional teachers and whatnot. Basically, on our presentation pages thirteen.
Twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Right. So it would cover all those issues that we have been hearing about and that have been brought before us.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Stiles, continue. Remington?
Have you given any thought to how you're going to break down discretionary non-payroll as well as non-discretionary non-payroll? Because if you run the last. Because if you were on the last meeting, we wanted specifics with the word discretionary. Because discretionary could mean.
Anything?
So where you said discretionary non-payroll, three percent, nondiscretionary non-payroll, sixteen percent. And I do see eighty-one percent payroll, but is there a breakdown of?
Yes. Well, yeah, I think what Mr. Perrin's pointing to is the notes that were under that slide. We can provide those.
Yeah.
And we also have the.
Oh, but you don't.
We also can provide the detail that came up with those numbers. And I, I would, I would agree with you that there may be some items on there that some may think are discretionary and some may not think it's discretionary. But we wanted to make sure that you saw what was included in our determination. But you can also, we can also provide you the detail elements to each of those.
Because this is something that I'm quite sure, this would be helpful for everyone.
Okay.
Does anyone have this? Am I the only one that doesn't have this?
No, I don't have it.
That was a working copy. We had this.
Yeah, on PowerPoint.
Cut it off. Probably cut it off.
Slide eleven.
Probably cut it off.
Go to the notes.
I'll do it too. But yeah, it got cut off.
It probably, it just got cut off.
At the bottom. Here you go. Slide one.
Yeah, that might be a good idea. She's going to go make copies for him, but.
Wait, I got it. Yeah. See everything bigger? Hold on.
So you see it? Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. We'll, we'll provide you those notes quickly. And also Brittany has a report that basically shows all the items that were included.
Okay. Let me let Remington finish first. Will you finish? Remington?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. All right, now, back on your side.
I just want to make clear that we talked about the holiday pay for the ten-month one example for you. This is winter break, two weeks only. So I thought we were talking about holiday pay for. Maybe I misunderstood. I thought it was holiday pay for all the holidays, just for two weeks.
We couldn't do it all at one time.
Okay. All right, now, you couldn't do it all at one time, but we have the, the step increase included and the one point five.
In, in that figure of one hundred and forty-six, that's.
If, if we go all, do the whole thing, in other words, you asked us to put down what, what we need, and that's what we did, but it doesn't mean that we got all the revenue to cover those. That's why I said this is, this is presented in the must-need budget.
Okay. Now, when you, when you all worked on this, did you keep it as it was from the meeting that we had? You know, when we asked you all to flip some things?
No, we didn't keep the same. It's not the same.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. It's not the same, no.
Okay. But, I mean, the, 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 the step increase and all, was that in the must fund part?
I'm trying to make sure I understand what you're saying.
I, I, I think.
You see what I'm saying?
I think I understand what Ms. Williams is asking.
Right. And I know this is the, everything that we needed, you're saying. But we asked you all to go back and look at everything and then we would prioritize.
If you, if you don't get everything that you presented.
Right. Yes. Now, is this, this one point five, is this what the state is giving for the teachers?
The, the House and Senate version include a one point five percent raise. There are some caveats to that. The current versions include a raise starting in January. Also, it only includes SOQ-funded positions. And historically, we have not distinguished between a SOQ-funded teacher and a non-SOQ-funded teacher. And if we're going to give a raise, we're going to give all.
Okay. Did we take into consideration the, what the state is going to do as far as that?
No, right now, what's built in here is the more conservative governor's proposal back in December. So if the House and Senate version gets passed, we will, according to their versions, get slightly more than the governor's proposal. Right now, it's built on a conservative basis of just.
Mr. Lam?
Yes. Looking at, because we've built in, because of the request with, with issues that have been popping up on as far as students and whatnot, and it's put back in the budget a little bit about the CSAP, fifty-three thousand dollars. And that was looking more at the not special education slots, but that was for regular ed.
No, that was.
That particular one. Is, is the special education slots, is that about the equivalent? Are we paying about that much for that, or is that higher, or?
I believe it's slightly higher. I can get you the exact figure.
And do you have any idea how many slots that that is? That fifty-three thou, no, 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 for the fifty-three thousand, the, the regular ed. Do you know how many slots that would be?
Yeah. I, I'm thinking it was, I'll have to confirm this. I, I thought it was between five to eight slots, but I'll have to check.
Okay.
Dr. Whittaker?
Going back to the starting salary with the table that you have, is that a mean? Is it the median, or is that, because it doesn't say?
It's neither the mean nor the median, it's what it is. So it's basically if the initial step of teacher comes in, that's what it is.
And is that for all fields irrespective of? Okay. So I know math is one of the priorities that we have in terms of filling positions. So is there any way, I don't know, to glue in the budget some type of incentive pay for getting math teachers in?
No, that's been talked about. We'd probably defer to, probably Dr. Teal or maybe on that. This is on the incentive pay.
And you're asking, is there any way? The, the only way that, not the only way, but any way of doing it would be to go back and look at the number of additional instructional support people and maybe, or not maybe, but looking at the data as to what the schools will need based on the requests that we have here. And possibly being more positive on one side and using that as a portion, not a portion, but looking at the number of positions that we have. Where we have ten, maybe we could do it with eight instead of using the data as a guide.
Because I know we have positions at some schools where we don't have math teachers. And I think that's a priority.
And it is a priority, and it is because it's in the budget. It's just that trying to find them.
And what we're paying them.
And what we're looking at. Yes. Because they're taking jobs that they're paying much more than what we can pay them at the teacher's level.
All right, Mr. Lam?
I know that we, we, as a board, we've asked a couple times with regards to asking for, for an incentive, not necessarily incentive pay, but that was one option, to, to some kind of, of a plan to attract math teachers. And we haven't gotten that planned or, or any ideas back yet. Is that, is that still being worked on, or, or what?
Well, for one thing, Mr. Lam, I think we, when we started asking for it, when Dr. Stuckrich was on his way out, and since then, we've gone through Dr. Fisher and then, and Mr. Steele temporarily and then Dr. Race is here, so. I don't think, I don't think you're going to have an answer to your question because we had a turnover. And I, it wasn't that it's been assigned for somebody below them, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. And second.
I guess what I'm saying is now would be a good time if you want, if you start to be looked at.
Well, I mean, it definitely is a good time. I mean, because it's, it has been something that has been brought up quite a few, quite a few times. And I think someone has taken, saying that they were going to look at it and so forth, and develop one. And I had a couple of conversations with Dr. Fisher on that as well. And secondly, when we look at math teachers or the recruitment of math teachers and so forth, besides just looking at, trying to recruit in the area, what have, what has been our efforts in trying to recruit outside of the area? I mean, do we not go outside of the state? Do we not try to go to other places besides what's recruiting locally as far as for staff and math teachers?
I'm going to defer to Jessica Durham. She might give her eyes on light on that.
We do recruit outside of the state of Virginia, and that's mostly through online recruiting, through Teach for America and Troops to Teachers, because those are national programs. And that's how we make most contact with people outside of the state. Our budget has not allowed us to travel outside of the state for recruiting in the last several years, unfortunately. So we certainly do attend all of the fairs that are local, Old Dominion, Christopher Newport, Norfolk State, Hampton University. But as far as traveling outside of the state to recruit, mostly that is done online.
And how many years has that been since you haven't been able to recruit outside of state?
I will say, I'm trying to think of the last fair that we've attended that was outside of state. It's probably been at least five years that we've been outside of state to actually recruit.
And how many websites? You, you've mentioned two or three.
Two for sure that are specifically geared towards national recruitment. But of course, our website is public and is available to anybody, anywhere. And certainly, we post our positions with VDOEs, teacher recruitment as well. So we have teachersteachers.com, so people can access that, Troops to Teachers and Teach for America.
Ms. Williams?
I was just going to add a comment that I believe even if we flew around the world.
Yes, ma'am.
If we are not paying them.
Yes, ma'am.
What some of the other districts are.
And they're difficult to attract.
Yeah, they're not really going to come unless we can get some type of incentive.
And that's why we.
Pay, pay going on. And also the fact that we have not had, well, our director retired.
Certainly.
Our deputy superintendent retired, and our superintendent retired. So we have some very key positions that, that must be filled. So maybe it's something that we could look at, having a proposal of some type of incentive to attract them, because I think we can recruit anywhere unless we can raise the pay because they are going into private industries.
And if I remember correctly, it's been some time ago, it's been a while, but I think that was one of the reasons we stopped going out. Because we were going out, but we still were coming back in the hand because we couldn't compete on salary issue, like you said.
Because that is a critical position that.
You're going to say me last. You're going to let me talk at very.
Mr. Perrin, I saw your hand going up.
That's all right. No, I was, I was, go ahead and I'll, I'll be the last.
Oh, thank you. There is on the VDOE website a Virginia Middle School Math Teacher Grant that is due March second, twenty fifteen. It's Virginia Middle School Teacher Corps helps school divisions fill a critical teacher shortage area, which is middle school mathematics. And I know that we're not necessarily short in middle school mathematics. And there are some criteria here, but I, I know it's a short turnaround for staff. But if we're looking for ways to, to give some incentives to teachers, that may be, and there are certain criteria, and I can't speak to whether or not we fill all of that criteria. But it is under, it's under VDOE Career Resources and Professional Development tab.
Hello? And then Dr. Wood.
I, I see our needs, but I'm still asking a question from our last meeting. Have we done our due diligence in finding more reductions that we could possibly have in the budget? Have we surveyed every aspect of the budget thoroughly to find more reduction? Obviously, we're good at finding what we need, that's easy. But I'll, I'll be looking at tough decisions that could be made, possibly made, to find more funding for these, for these needs.
Well, that's a loaded question. I think we have done a good job. There are some things that, on that slide where we said we included them in the budget that were previously on the table. And so those items have previously been looked at and were considered high priority items, and that's why we were included. That's not to say we could throw them back on the table again, or we didn't throw them back on the table. So there, there are a number of places we've looked at before, we've done the analysis, we thought they were high priority. So they, they've been included, but in any budget, of course, things can be, you know, the scenario could change. For, for instance, if we wanted employees to, and, and the big dollar ones are like health insurance. If we want employee to raise the co-pays and things like that for employees, we can start looking at those things, and those could have some big impacts. But we didn't, we didn't go there.
Well, outside of instruction and outside of educational programs, either for our children, have we surveyed other areas of the budget to make sure we're not?
We, we think we've looked at every area and we have on the table, I guess, some reductions. I, I guess I, I would say that I think we've done a good job. But if, if, if the board wants us to revisit any other area that previously was considered something that is a high priority, we could certainly do that.
Dr. Whittaker?
I have a question about the Medicaid maximization. You mentioned that we're offering services that could be reimbursed. What services in particular were you referencing?
For instance, if we do occupational, speech therapy, those types of services, and those we can request reimbursement for Medicaid.
Are there any others that we currently?
I think I could provide you a, a full list of those types of things that are eligible. And I'll make sure I get some.
And is it possible to maybe have an estimate of how much we might?
Actually, that's what we're trying to do now. We're, we're trying to check with other school districts to see what their historical reimbursement rate has increased. Now Hampton has done, Hampton Schools has done it. Some of the schools around Richmond have done it. So we're checking with them to see what their history is.
That piggyback on that one?
Okay. You want to heal?
If it's a piggyback, yeah, so are you.
Who will be filing the Medicaid reimbursements? Is that a staff position? Is that additional staff person, or how will that be done?
It's probably the same person that's doing it now. So we're already providing that service. But in some cases, there may be a slight increase in ministry of loan because some of the documentation that's required for more Medicaid reimbursement may require that. But whatever it is, we think that the return is, you know, far exceeds that additional ministry.
All right, Ms. Matt?
And just adding on to what Mr. Portello was, was asking. I know at the last meeting, you had said that you had put out across the board of asking each department, I think, a ten, ten to fifteen percent.
Fifteen.
A cut, or fifteen percent cut. And I think what Mr. Portello's asking, and I think maybe at least him and I and probably a few others, is, is specifically asking, we, we would like to know exactly what, what is being cut or what is looked at as cut, not necessarily what department in and of itself. For example. what department in and of itself, or for example, let's just go back to this sheet here that we all got copies of now, discretionary includes, and I'm assuming that that would be an area that you would look at and make cuts, discretionary. I mean, it says new equipment, custodial supplies, building supplies, office supplies. I know what those things mean, but specifically, you know, what are we looking at? Are we looking at contracts of office supplies, or what new equipment, or technology materials? What exactly, I mean, technology is a world in and of its own doing, so, you know, I'm asking specifically, you know, what are we looking at?
Well, what I think we could provide you fairly quickly is all the account lines of those divisions that were cut, say that fifteen percent, so you can see, you know, what object code, et cetera, we might not tell you exactly who on cutting, you know, this particular box of paper, but it'll tell you office supplies is cut fifteen percent, you know, something like that. So I can give you all those account lines by the departments that were cut, what the previous budget was on those lines, what the proposed budget is in those lines, and these aren't things that we just executed, we requested them to pick, we didn't pick fifteen percent.
I would, I would question that.
Good, Mr. Parent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. We met this morning, about a couple hours to go through this final presentation. One of the things, and Mr. Still, I hate to put you and Dr. Taylor on the, but what I'm, what I'm looking at is that in the, in the budget, and Dr. Taylor, we've got to clarify this, because what was, what we talked about today was, because one of the concerns I think the, I've heard since we've started this process, is that we have schools that their people-teacher ratio is much higher, and we wanted to make sure that our classroom, our classrooms, and we're trying to lower the people-teacher ratio in our classrooms. So what was originally brought up, and I see it's now changed, that you had additional teachers in grades four through six and three math teachers. Now, what we were told was that you had already, I mean, we didn't need those anymore, so in the presentation tonight, that they're, they're not there. I just want to make sure from the Department of Instruction that we are making sure, because that's been, that's been my concern, I think it's been a concern of the board, that we're making sure that we have, we're going to try to lower our people-teacher ratio in those grades. Now, I know when you look at additional instructional support, we're going to get, you're going to, we're proposing ten elementary school teachers, three middle school reading specialists. Now, those ten, those ten elementary school teachers, that, if I am correct, is early-up. Is that correct?
We, we looked at early-up, but when we went back and looked at it this afternoon, the ten went there to help us with those lower grades, with that K through three class size reduction, and those ten books are expected to go to the lower levels. We normally have a high enrollment, so kindergarten and first grade, so that's where the ten come in.
So the early-up teachers that you had projected, they're gone? I mean, we're not including them, you don't need them?
They are not included in this ten, because early-up is still existing.
Right, I understand, but you had indicated you were adding additional teachers.
And this will help us with early-up.
Okay.
This, that's why the number is ten.
Okay.
Okay, that will help us.
And then the three middle school reading specialists, that does not help the people-teacher ratio, because they don't have a classroom, they just, they go in and they either work in the classroom, and then you added the, the six STEM teachers.
Okay, those are not our STEM teachers, and talking with the Director of Science, based on the standards of quality, grades K through eight has to have the core subjects taught in kindergarten through eighth grade. About eight years ago, a change was made in the implementation of the science and social studies curriculum as to where it would be taught. At, in science, they did not teach science at all in seventh grade. It was taught at the eighth grade year wherein, well, the half, the half of the year was life science, the second half was physical science. And talking with the Director of Science, she would like to start back teaching science in the seventh grade, so that when the students get to the eighth grade, we will not have to cram those two courses into one year. So that's why we have the six life sciences, the six life science teachers, six life science teachers at the seventh grade, and in talking with the Director of Science, she listed the teachers as Priority One, and the STEM teacher was listed as Priority Two. So we asked, what do you prefer? And she prefers six teachers based upon STEM teacher. So that's where we got the science teachers from.
So you're saying to us that these additional teachers, that our people-teacher ratio in grades K three and four, four through six, they're going to be, they're going to be lower?
This will help us, because in early-up, we didn't hire additional teachers in the very beginning, and in not hiring new teachers, in the early-up program, a second-grade teacher automatically, or a first-grade teacher, was named the early-up teacher.
Okay.
And in doing so, that increased the student-teacher ratio. But when we take these ten teachers and use them at the lower elementary-
Right.
That will help us decrease that teacher-people ratio.
Right, because there've been some complaints that in four through six, that the people-teacher ratio would, some classes had thirty-five and thirty-sixths, and you can't, we can't, I mean, that, we, I know as a board member, that, that just can't happen, because that's not helping, even if you have additional reading teachers to go in the classroom, you've got, the impact's got to be in the classroom.
Right.
So I just want to make sure from the Department of Instruction that we have, in this budget proposal, ample teachers, that additional teachers, that can help reduce that. I mean, I'm all in favor of instruction support, I mean, I'm in favor of that, but I just want to make sure that the regular classroom, we're getting those, that people-teacher ratio as low as we possibly can while we're asking for this money. That was just discrepancy, and I just wanted to make sure that we've got that covered.
And let me follow up on that, Mr. Parent, because that's one of the reasons that we asked Dr. Taylor to come down today, and she provided a document that actually showed what the people-teacher ratio is, but then, and I, and I referenced what you just said about the high number, and one of the things that we have to make sure that's not occurring is that if we assign this additional staff to the schools, we need to make sure that the principals know the purpose that they're there for, they need to make sure that job description is being followed and not having them doing something else.
Right.
Because if that happens, then you can walk into a class that's been doubled up, and this person's been used in another way.
Right.
So that's what we wanted to make sure, that what we were getting was accurate, and I can make sure that the principals understand why they're in the schools.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman? I thought you were finished. I'm sorry, hold on.
No, that's okay.
Wait, Mr. Parent, continue.
All right. I better, I better do it quicker, I'm just going to, all right.
No, I thought you, I thought you were finished.
No, on page twenty-eight, if you flip to page twenty-eight, the proposed budget, under the general fund revenue, on page minus twenty-eight, slide twenty-eight, slide, excuse me, slide twenty-eight, General Rev, Fund Revenue Overview, 2015-16 proposed, you see the one forty, one hundred forty million, four sixty-three. Then if you go to the next slide, you see the expenditure is one forty-six. So I guess, in essence, what I hope you understand is that we are asking for everything that we asked for in 2014, that we ranked orders, remember that list? Plus all the things that you've asked for now. So that's why that, that's why you don't have a balanced budget, that's why the budget's not balanced, you're asking for additional. So we've included all of the things that we've talked about, and I guess that's what, that's what, where we are now as a board, to what we are going to present to City Council. I think it's our duty as a, this is the way I feel personally, as a school board member, I think it's our responsibility to present the needs to the City Council. And I realize that our needs, I realize that, that we have to look at state revenue, and we have to look at all revenue, and then we have to decide as a board, what can we afford? Here's what, here's what we need. This is, this is a budget that is, that's going to include all of these things, and you're right about, Mr. Patello, you're right about, is everything on the line? When we look at SOQ principals and assistant principals and guidance counselors, and all these, they're great, but when you look at the, at the very top, are we top-heavy? Those are kinds of questions that, because we're going to have to, we may have to go in this direction, because if City Council says, look, you know, you've, you've given us a budget that, you know, includes all these things, and they're worthwhile, but here's what the state's going to get, and here's what we can afford, and if we get level funding, then, you know, we're going, we're going to have to, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board, because what we're asking for is about five or six million dollars above what they gave us the year before. So the question is, is every, is every position should be on the table? Because the most important thing, I feel like, as a board member, is that instruction, especially what happens in the classroom, and who supports classroom instruction, that's got to be first. And all these other things that, the discretionary and nondescrip, I mean, if eighty-one percent of this budget is, is personnel, there is no other place to cut, because if you're going to, you're going to pick and choose on nondescript, office supplies and all this other stuff, I mean, we can pick, and we can pick until you, I mean, you're not going to get money, a lot of money from those two categories. The money's coming from salaries, that's where the money is. And so it depends on how well received the City Council views this budget that we're going to present, or you're going, we're going to decide to present, and if they say, well, this is what we're going to give you, and then we have to go back and we have to, we have to go through and start cutting, we need to make sure that we protect, I mean, as I, I'm speaking for myself as a board member, I want to protect the classroom instruction, and that's instructional assistance, and everything that supports, and everything else above, it may be administration, I mean, we may have to look, make some hard choices about top-heavy administration, can we, can we do away with some of those positions? Do we have to have all those positions? I know Dr. Bracy has talked about a PIO officer, that's something that we need, but we haven't had one in years. But, I mean, we're going to have to, collectively as a board, we're going to have to make some really tough choices, and we've got to be realistic about it, and my one last question, I don't want to ask any more questions, is that the carryover budget, the carryover budget, I want us to be in a position, and I know Mr. Nance brought this up, but we don't want to be in a position where we're giving back any money to the federal government. I know they, one point six million dollars, that's a lot of money, and I know that when we present a carryover budget, we, when we present the Title I consolidation grant, you present a carryover budget. So you're telling me that we're spending, we're spending all of the carryover budget first, and then the, the new grant we're working on? In other words, we're not going to be in a situation where Portsmouth is going to give any money back, because if we are, then somebody, that, we should not be in that position.
Mr. Parent.
Because I know you work with Title I budget.
Right, and I can tell you, within the carryover budget, there is no money that can be given back.
Right.
Because almost all that-
Goes to salaries.
Salaries, absolutely.
Right.
We can carry over up to fifteen percent.
Right.
But we don't have that, like we did years back.
Right.
All of that money is used, so we won't be caught in that. That's one thing I know we cannot be caught in, we don't have any money that we will return back, absolutely not.
Good, thank you.
I'm finished, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Parent. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I, I do want to say that that classroom has to be protected, first and foremost, that, that has gone, there's been a lot of cuts out of the classroom, too many cuts over the years, to where we're in the position that we are in because of that. And I think we're seeing the effects of it, and as we go along here. With that, we were talking about, Dr. Taylor, about the science positions and so forth, and that K through eight has to have, you have to teach that subject, and that supposedly we were combining life science with physical science and so forth. Help me out here, you may not know the answer tonight, and that's okay, but I'd like to know an answer. Have we also done that in other areas, such as history? I like, say, for example, if we're not covering an SOL, if the year that an SOE L is not covered, and so we skip that year of history?
We hired those teachers back the last year for history. We did not bring them back in science. Social Studies was also one of them.
So Social Studies was one that was getting skipped for?
It was getting skipped, but those teachers have been hired already. Science, we did not bring them back in science.
And I could, I mean, I could possibly make the point that possibly, because of the accreditation and so forth, why we were missing on some of those off-years is because these kids weren't getting those subjects in the years that they were having for them to be. I mean, if you're missing one whole year here, and you're going to have an SOL test next year that's going to cover from, from here to there, if you didn't cover it, you can't, you can't take the test with that. Also, too, I think it's been brought up quite a few times, well, a few times, but something we need to look at, and I don't know how many years ago it was before, but we may have to look at rezoning some of our, some of our schools with these overcrowding issues. I know Churchland area is pretty high, and when you even look down on this side, I know we came up with Douglas Park and Brighton as, granted, I know there's some issues with Brighton as far as how funding and so forth is done with the teacher ratio, but, I mean, this may be something that we may have to go back and relook at again, of where some of these students are being zoned to, to help alleviate some of these classrooms.
And we've, Mr. Still and I have already talked about that, and that's something that I know that you already-
Yeah, that's one of the areas we're already looking at, and there is a problem with at least three of the schools that I think our plan right now was to evaluate this and present it to the board, I think we were talking about during the summer, so that we can make some recommendations to the board on changes, but at least to start the discussion, that that is certainly an issue.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, going back to the classroom teacher, and the three middle, middle school reading specialists, so you are assuring this board that the parents are not coming to us at the beginning of next year, saying that they are thirty-five, thirty-four, or whatever in a classroom, that these reading specialists are needed just as much as the classroom teacher. I just want that reassurance, because we don't want to go through that. I just want that reassurance because we don't want to go through that because they will come to us.
Yep.
And they tell us exactly how many kids in the classroom. And also, some of the schools, they were telling me they did not have the space in the school to even make another classroom because they were all so crowded. And that was when they were having two... Remember the two classes in one room or something? So, in a situation like that, and I believe some of the principals did tell me that in the past, they would have those students report to that school, but they would be bused to another elementary school that had a room. They still stayed together. So, my focus is really on the classroom teacher. I think it's wonderful to have all these specialists and all of that, but we need people in there that are, especially with our accreditation issues, that are kind of hands-on. So, if you are assuring me that this will be taken care of and we're not going to hear the same concerns that we heard last year, then I will support this presentation to council. But if we hear the same thing, then that makes me lose all confidence...
Right.
...and all faith in what you present us.
Right. Mr. Chairman. There was an assumption today, and I think Dr. Bracy, I'm talking with Dr. Taylor, there was an assumption that capacity, that these teachers... The teachers that were in and are not in, that capacity was... They looked at capacity to make sure that these teachers, I mean, had a place... I mean, that we had a place for every teacher in the building. Because you've got to look at capacity. Because if your enrollment goes up and you have additional teachers, then you're going to have teachers that may have to rove, you know, do the roving teachers, which we don't like. But you've got to make sure that you've got the building that will accommodate the teachers so that your pupil teacher ratio is lower. And I was assured that these new figures took in consideration exactly what you said, is that we have the capacity. Because we're not going back to mobile units. That's done. So, we may have to rezonate some schools because of the fact that they can't accommodate the children. And you've got to have a place. And if they're zoned for Brighton or zoned for whatever school, that's where they've got to go. And you don't have space. We're not going to move mobile units to that school. So...
And one of the other things that we've discussed also, Ms. Williams, was that year to year, population changes within a particular school or with a particular cohort of students coming up. And you go back to... I go back to when I was a principal. You know, I was accustomed to having, let's just say, eight teachers at this grade level. So, enrollment's declining, but I still have these eight teachers. Now, one of the things that I said that we need to take a look at is looking at the need of the teachers in the schools. And you could have teachers in an elementary school or a middle school that you may have a low teacher-student ratio, but you probably have more teachers there than you would actually need. So, we need to look at the number of teachers that are assigned in a building to make sure that it's... That the ratio is a need. It needs to be a defined need for the teachers that you have in that building and what they're teaching. So, that's something that we need to take a look at now. Right now, I don't have the luxury of knowing that at this particular point, but as we get to the beginning of the year and as we get there from now, that's something that I can start taking a look at. The numbers, the projected numbers, the capacity of the building and the needs of the building by grade level and by subject.
And another request, I will support the presentation, but also would like for you all to look at the top heaviness or to see if it is some factual information because we do get a lot of that about top-level administration. And so, if you could present us a report on that, what you found. I know this is your first week because we were snowing out all last week. So, we want to give you an opportunity to get your...
We're talking about snow Thursday.
Oh, Jesus. Don't say anything. Yeah, but lots of things that we've discussed for the past year, even with Dr. Speck was leaving, we wanted to look at that to see what areas we could combine, eliminate, or see what we needed. We're not talking about the classroom. We need the classroom teacher, but at the top level.
Mr. Nance?
Three things, quick. Number one, when we're talking about ten teachers, we're talking about those ten teachers are going to K three, correct?
Yes.
Which still will not help with the four-six classroom.
That's right.
So, we still may have thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six kids in a sixth-grade classroom that is not bigger than this room. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
That's right.
Okay. Number two, when we're talking about budget funds for athletics, I support athletics, don't get me wrong when I say this, but where does the gate go? When we talk about ticket prices at the gate for basketball, for football, for whatever, are they also self-funding? Does that gate money go back into that athletic fund or where does that gate go? And then what does that gate used for? I'm all about helping and supplementing because those are positive things that our kids need, but they should at some point be able to fund some things themselves or at least help fund some things with the gate that they bring in. I'm just making a statement. And number three, I just want to make sure I'm clear, at the hundred and forty-six million-dollar budget, that includes a step raise for every... A step raise or a two percent raise or just the one and a half?
It includes a step plus a one and a half percent.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was looking at because there was some bouncing around going, "Thank you." That's all, quick.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
I'm just following up.
All right, you follow up with what?
Does anyone know where the gate goes? That was a good question.
It goes back into the athletics. So, for a football game, it goes back to the football team.
So, they use it to...
And then they use it at their discretion. And the principal has to authorize...
Authorize the expenditure.
Whatever purchases, yeah.
But it's used for the team?
Yes, it should be used for the team.
Not personal?
No.
I'm going to follow up on that before I call on you. You've been here for a short period of time, but is in any way possible you'd take a look at each one of the programs and see if it's... I know they're not self-sustaining in some of the schools, I know that. I know the football programs are not self-sustaining, but could you take a look at... I mean, like the... I know in some... One of the schools, I think the basketball program is doing well. Could we take a look at that and not right away, but bring us a report back how they did last year?
So, you want to see...
In other words... In other words, did the gate support the program? Because I understand... My understanding is a lot of the times the gates do not support the program that is... And I understand that. But I understand also that there are certain programs the gate does support.
So, when you say support, you mean cover?
Yeah, at least break even. Okay, Mr. Williams.
Well, and now that you've kind of added that and so forth, too, I kind of like to see... I was under the understanding possibly that even though it's a football game and those gate numbers and so forth, that gets put into the athletic fund, not necessarily into the football program. And so, if you could find some clarification on that, that would probably answer a lot of questions that we've had come up over the past year and a half, which would bring some finality to some things. And then secondly, again, after listening to some of these conversations and bouncing and so forth, again, I've got to go back to the whole classroom thing. And it might sound like we're beating a dead dog here, but we're not. Again, we've seen... We're seeing the ramifications of this over and over. And so, things like reading specialists, I mean, I know that's important. It's got even an important sounding name, but a reading specialist is not in the classroom. They are not. They're not there six hours of the day. But a teacher is or a paraprofessional. Also, too, with some of the things with... Just my thoughts, my opinion, if some of these things had to be forego in order to make it happen, that we get more teachers? Because again, grades four through six up in Churchland, that's not even going to touch those classroom sizes if we add three reading specialists or so forth. Because again, the ten elementary school teachers is the K through three, so we're not even touching that. If I had to go forego some of these things such as the PIO, and again, I realize these are important in and of itself, but right now, the emphasis needs to be on that classroom. So, if some of these things needed to be foregoed, that's where I would be... That's where I'm at on it.
I have a comment concerning the athletics. I just want to say I'm very wary about using or talking about gate money to fund athletics. That needs to be something that is built in to the budget. Because student athletes, there are a lot of requirements associated with participating in sports. Gate money is fluctuating. It's not something that's guaranteed on a level basis. And I just want to go on record as saying that when you started talking about using gate money to support athletics, I believe that's a mistake.
Well, I think we were asking for a report.
Right.
We were just trying to figure out...
And there's an implication that you could use that money to help support.
Well, it's possible to do. Yeah, but we would just like to know because it came with some...
Well, and there are sports that don't have gates, you know, softball, soccer, cheerleading, you know, and so... You know, I've just had parents contact me and they need $450 for basketball uniforms and warm-ups in November, you know, right as we're getting into Christmas. And when basketball is one of your bigger ticket items at a school, there should be some fund to help alleviate that burden for the parents. So, I don't want it to... Because I know it's not going to sustain, but that money should go back into helping support all athletes of that building, some shape, fashion, form.
Right, not take out the budget what we do, but is that an absolute...
Can I have one more comment? I'm sorry. I know we have a fiduciary duty, and I had to make sure I was saying that word right, a fiduciary duty, to make sure that we are presenting a budget that is all of our needs for the school system. And I think this hundred and forty-six million-dollar budget does do that. And that is the superintendent's duty as state code. So, I would like to say, I think we've done well with this budget. I think we're putting him up, supporting him in his duty because this is his duty. It's not our board's duty. So, I just want to say with this hundred and forty-six, I think we've done some... We'll do some magical things with a hundred and forty-six.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Steele, my understanding is that, I don't know whether we... The surplus... Well, gosh. The, I guess, the surplus if there is that he... We have been helping supplementing the high school, the middle school and high schools with additional funding over the years. And that money comes from... Has that been coming from any surplus or has that been... Where does that money come from?
Previous to last year, it was not built into the budget.
Wow, that's why I'm...
So, as we came to the end of the year, I know there were some available funds.
Right.
Some of those funds were given to the school activity fund to support that. But it was basically uncertain. You don't know if it was going to come out and electric gate funds. You don't know what it's going to be.
Right.
And we wanted to build the capacity into the budget to have a planned amount in addition to the other revenue sources. It's not like those are blown away, but this is to prevent parents from paying a unreasonable amount, et cetera, which is just a bit... So, all these other revenue sources, I don't think anybody's arguing they go away. They all contribute, but the general fund contribution to that was not certain. It wasn't built into the budget and that's what's being built into it.
The other thing that I want to make sure to understand is that over the years, we've been told that the ADs, in other words, when they got... Received these funds, that they made the decision about where the funds and basically football and basketball, basically whatever funding they had, they got the bulk of the money. And then we had cheerleaders and all the other groups coming before the board asking for money. It's my understanding that they and with the principal, the cheerleaders, they didn't get anything. And I think we even brought up the fact that it was an expectation that cheerleaders had to raise their own funding. And we said, "No." I thought we said, "No," that we needed to make sure that we were finding some money to help the cheerleaders so they wouldn't have to pay so much out of pocket. So, the practice of the AD and then we heard, well, some principals say, "No, it's the AD director. It's the athletic director. They make the decision." It's supposed to be making a decision, I guess, with the input of the principal as to where... How these funds are distributed. We just need to make sure that everybody's getting a little piece of the pie. Football is big. And I know we support football and sports and basketball as well, but then there are other sports that need to be funded as well and especially cheerleaders. And, you know, we want to make sure that we've got the right uniforms and we invested in making sure of the helmets. We had the best helmets and new uniforms because we don't want to send our students out on a field that, I mean, they're looking ragged in. I mean, it's an embarrassment to this city and this school system. We just make... We need to make sure that whoever's making the decision, that it is still the principal's responsibility in conjunction with the athletic director to make sure that everybody, the best they can, gets a little piece of the pie. We should not have cheerleaders coming to this board like they did this year and saying, "We don't have equipment. We don't have this and we don't have that." And they're having to fork over four or five hundred dollars. I think we made a commitment that wasn't going to happen, at least I thought we did.
Okay, Ms. Williams, then Dr. Wood.
Do we have any type of policy on that? Well, do we need a policy because it's so inconsistent?
Yes.
And that's the issue that comes before us because this AD may do one thing...
Right.
Then this one might do something. And it's just a system of inconsistency.
Right.
So, can we give that to the policy committee?
Sure.
Say it right now, is it ready? To come up with a consistent policy?
And that was one of the... That was one of the things that we talked about last year, making to get all that rest consistent.
Yeah, because it's like they do whatever they want to do. So, I would recommend that we do that. And a couple last questions, then I'll be done. Does this budget, and you may have said it, Mr. Steele, does it take in consideration any new technology or some of the upgrades or things that we needed that we talked about so much last year? And then also, the council people talked about, you know, bringing us up to, you know, with iPads or different things for students that they emphasize.
Well, actually, we're in the middle of a multi-year upgrade of those types of things. I can only be just a part of that effort right now to put, for instance, iPads into the classroom.
Sure. We're starting at the base and it's a foundation that we need to build in order to have the capacity to have wireless technology in the schools. And that's something, part of the CIP, that we've added into to build out the capacity for wireless in all of our schools. We haven't had a chance to update a lot of our infrastructure. So, the plan has been set where we want to get back in and update a lot of our infrastructure, both wired and wireless. The other things that we spoke to with regards to the budget was what we have in the classroom because I agree that the classroom is the most important place in the school. All of these things support what goes on in the classroom. In talking with a lot of the teachers and working with... In talking with a lot of the teachers and working with curriculum instruction, we really need to put, I mean, back, I won't say the old days, but back when we were in school, it was a chopboard. Now it's not, it's a projector, it's a screen, a generative whiteboard, or it's a touch, large touchscreen device. So, part of what we put into the CIP budget was those types of capabilities, that's all I can remember off the top of my head.
So, so the answer was no.
Answer was no.
The answer was no, we don't. You know, it's in the CIP.
Yes.
And we know that they haven't really approved much in the way of CIP.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, my last one. It was on the turn. The other thing was. Jesus, you're.
Want to go this way?
I think we'll come back to it. I know it was the technology piece, oh, I know, I counted them. As far as the self-insurance piece, so, I think your presentation said that the insurance was like 600 and some thousand, but it's really half of what it would have been if we had not done that, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's a little bit independent of that, but the rate has come down, the self-insurance and how that's benefiting us probably won't be known for a few more months. We just started one January, and we're tracking the history of claims starting one January and comparing it to what we expected it to be, and that'll tell us if we're running ahead of expectations or below expectations. So, starting, I think after March, April timeframe, watch your reporting to the board, and I know City Council will be interested to see, because they've put some contingency behind it, to see how we're doing.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I thought it had already been agreed upon that uniforms for teams were to be purchased through particular vendors, and that students were not supposed to be shelling out money individually for those purchases. And as you're saying, it may be the case that the policy is just not being followed in all cases, because I thought that policy was already in place.
I don't, I don't think the policy was in place, and I think that was an issue that came up last year that we had to vote on in this year's budget for the additional funding, but I, I don't think it was a.
This money was available, we got it.
Right. It was, you know, year-end money, that activity fund.
Right.
They, they funded what they could out of that, and then the rest was to come up in this year's budget, I think, of what they could.
Reverend Flynn?
Your athletic and band increase to high schools and middle schools, is that going to be even across the board, or is everyone going to receive, according to the items included in the budget, a specific amount, and is that, is that how that's going to work?
The way it was set up starting last year is that high schools and middle schools got a set amount for both athletics and band, and then that amount is being increased for this year. Again, just to slowly build up the capacity over, you know, three or four years to try to get it to us.
And I do see the increase here, but I do want Dr. Bracy to be aware that our concern was how it was being spent, and if it was being spent, because as you're hearing, parents keep telling us, especially band parents, that students do not go to competitions. Matter of fact, they come to our organizations, they come to our churches, they come to us individually, and they ask for us to send them. And it's as if there is some lock on this line, and someone needs to know who has the key.
All right, Mr. Lam, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and I think that is where a policy is going to come into play, because what, what I'm hearing here, and what we've heard from students and so forth, and with what we had to go through with the Churchland High School with the, the uniforms and so forth, it really sounds like that monies, however it's done, through concessions or what is allocated in the budget, it goes to the individual schools, and then the athletic director of that school then divvies out how that money is to be spent with whatever sports team or cheerleading team and so forth. And maybe that's where policy will have to stipulate more stringently on how money will be allocated out by individual sports and so forth. Because how it is right now is, of course, they get money, but then if I'm the athletic director, and if I'm still stuck on not liking something that I saw last season or something, and I'm not saying anyone's doing this, but we all have preferences, this, this sport might get a little more than what this sport, and things get overlooked, and I think that is what's, has happened in the past.
So, Mr. Lam, I guess it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, this was part of the rationale for district-wide athletic director, because of some of these things that I'm hearing now, is that, is that the case?
It probably is.
To, to make sure that things were equitable across to all the schools, middle and, and high school, and making sure that the procedures that's expected, expected from the, from the district is, is carried through?
Yeah, when we brought up the district-wide athletic, that was talking, well, it would tie into this, this was a side show, but those discussions at that time, conversations, was talking more along the lines of developing our athletes being able to compete for scholarships and so forth. That's what the conversation was centered around for that position at that time, but I could very seriously see how, you know, monies would go into this as, as well.
Yeah, because that person will be overseeing all of this and, and watching the, the allocations that are being requested from the, from the athletic directors at the school, you'll be able to see what they're actually requesting or ordering.
Dr. Whitaker, and then Mr. Perrin.
That was my point, that we really need a citywide athletic director position, and I think that would take care of a lot of the issues that we're, that we're seeing. And I, I think initially, it wasn't just about developing students to get scholarships, but the coordination of athletics, which I think is paramount.
Mr. Perrin?
Mr. Steele, in the, the slides this morning, and I'm glad Ms. Williams, because she triggered something about technology, instructional technology software, we had $250,000 in the presentation. I don't see it in tonight's presentation, now did it get, I mean, you just wiped, I mean, did it get absorbed under technology, under, on slide 29? Because it comes right under, if you look at your slide, academic program improvement, and right underneath was instructional technology software, $250,000, that disappeared. Where did it go?
That, that particular requirement was developed in the prior year, when we were validating that, that requirement no longer existed. Some of it was taken care of with the existing budget, but some of it, if you recall, in the reappropriation for facilities and technology, there were some items in there that covered some of the requirements.
Oh, okay. I just was looking at what we worked on.
So.
But it's actually.
Instrubbing that, yes.
Okay, all right, that's all we know.
Okay, I have a question. When we worked on this today, one of the things we tried to make sure of when we were talking with Mr. Steele and the superintendent, is that we collaboratively had everything that board members wanted, as well as the administration set. Now, we just heard that, you said, you, for your concern, you can do away with the PIO. The reason he brought the PIO up was because the board wanted to have a PIO, and I wanted to have the PIO. So, do, the, the question that I have is, do you want to do away with that PIO and use that money in the classroom? So that's one change could be made, so it's not going to be still there when we do the next presentation. So, I mean, I, we can move it, but one of the reasons he had that in today was, as he reminded us, this was something that, he said, I wanted, and the board definitely wanted, I said, yeah, don't, don't take that out. So, you want to address that issue, or? Okay, right here, let's, let's just go right, these three hands right here.
Well, I certainly would say that it's wonderful to have if we had the luxury of that, but if, if I had to choose between the classroom teacher for that four, five, six, that still got 30 some people, then of course I would prefer it go, goes there. And also the fact, I think we have weathered the worst of our storms, we so hope. We have a new superintendent on board, and we, we weathered those storms without a public information officer. And maybe that's why we, we were really knocked around really bad, badly, but I think the worst of that is over. So if I had a choice, I would prefer that they go into the, the classroom.
Mr. Lam?
Well, my position has, has always been that classroom.
Okay.
I guess I'm concerned when I see PIO, I do understand image, but I do believe that if we present the right type of budget, that we will have a good image, and I don't even know if there is a trade-off if we eliminate the specialists under the recommendations. Maybe we can have a PIO.
Okay.
Can I say this part? I, I, I am also a little leery of saying to the new superintendent that we cannot accommodate something that he sees we need, but, again, the three reading specialists, if we do not have under our quality improvement recommendation the three math teachers that we talked about at the last meeting, I think we could do without the three reading specialists. You can quote me on that.
Okay, we'll leave the PIO in there.
You say leave it in?
Yeah, we'll leave it in and see what happens.
You didn't get the rest of the.
Oh, I believe, I didn't see the hands going up on that side.
I thought you were taking a poll.
No, 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 I'm not taking a poll, you just want to, you want to take it out or leave it in?
My, my position is to, to leave in what we have for now and see what the city comes back with. I don't think you should scrub or reduce what you're asking for until you know.
No, it was a trade-off to be put as simple on the teachers.
Until you know what you're going to get.
Yeah, we're going to take it off the PIO, put it on the teacher's side.
Why take it off if you don't know what you're going to get?
Because we need teachers, that's why.
It wasn't going to be, it wasn't going to be a reduction, it was just going to be a trade-off.
Right.
You can always, I mean, if it comes down to that, then you can.
Well, I thought this whole conversation was if it came down to it.
Yeah.
You know, then we, we would have to come back and make priorities and, and choices.
Right.
That, that's what we were speculating.
Right. We, we've done our duty by virtue of code, but.
Right, okay. Fair enough.
I just want to restate it again, that I feel we need to make sure we do our due diligence by making sure we make the proper cuts that need to be made in the budget. We want to not just our teachers, but also our parents, and the taxpayers in the city also. And we need to present City Council a budget showing that we took an extensive look at what we already had, and what we could possibly cut before we asked for this budget. And I'll say this also, it, it seems to me in the past that this budget process has been more political than anything else. I don't care, I don't care about who looks bad when they say yes or no, I just want to make sure these students have what they need in the classroom. So if we have to make cuts to do that, that's what we need to do. We shouldn't depend on make sure City Council tells us no first.
Yes.
And then we make decisions. We have to start being ahead of the game, so, so if we don't look, if we don't know where you're going to the public. And that's my observation.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
I'll just say one thing.
Dr. Whitaker?
And if you ask for less than what you need, then you're going to end up with less, right? I mean, you have to ask for what you need, and this is what we need, based upon the positions, based upon the teachers that we need, based upon the priorities that we have less than.
Number two?
And I agree on asking for what we need, but make sure we're not asking for things that we don't need, is what I'm, what I'm saying.
I mean, we've been, the funding has, you know, decreased over the years, which.
Okay, I saw your hand go up first, and then second, go, go ahead.
My position is that if we requested everything that we needed, it would be impossible. There are so many needs in the district, the achievement gap, the accreditation issues, we need after-school tutoring, Saturday school, we have people calling me about a Vo-Tec center, that everybody's not going to college. I mean, I'd like to see an achievable dream academy, like they do in Newport News. Well, they took all the at-risk students, and now those students are going to college, and they pay all of their teachers more as an incentive, but it's also partnered with the community, businesses and the system. So if we actually ask the city for what we need, we know that it would be impossible for them to do. So, if we look at what's been presented, this is just really mild when you really think about it. I want us to do our due diligence, I've asked the superintendent, or we'd be asked, I hope that he looked at the top to see, but that takes time. We have to make this presentation to the City Council on March the 3rd, next Tuesday. He does not have time to do that. So I think it's only fair, and going back to what Sarah said about the code, he's supposed to present the needs. And I think it would be a little remiss, I know I changed my tune because I had a vision. But we would be remiss if we did not present the needs of this district.
Right, right.
And if I could really present the needs, we would have one of the best school divisions in the country, because I, I think I know what it takes to make one, but it does, it does take investment.
That's right.
Yep, investment.
It does.
All right, Mr. Lam?
Again, I, echoing what Ms. Williams is saying, what Mr. Patel is saying, of course, if you submit a budget, you're, you're going to possibly get something less than what you asked for, I mean, that's a given, so then we have to ask then, based upon where we are as a district, do we need a PIO? If our schools are six out of 19 fully accredited, and we're needing 20 or so many teachers, and we still haven't really addressed that grades four through six, as far as the classroom, as far as high of those numbers and so forth, so we could ask, and we could prioritize even right now, if that is something that needs to be in, in this budget.
Can I? I think we can, but I don't think that's the discussion for right now. I don't, I, that's not the discussion we need to be having right now, we need to discuss whether or not we like this $146 million going forward. We know that we run the risk of not getting 146, that's just the way the ball's going to bounce. And so at that point, when City Council comes back. And so at that point, when City Council comes back and tells us we get 142.5, that's when we have the discussions about the prioritization. To me, a reading specialist in middle school is going to allow for that instruction of that child who gets lost in those 34 to 36 kid classrooms in elementary school, to allow them to help up with their reading in middle school. We have a lot of graders right now that are still reading on a fourth grade reading level, because it's just the way that it is. If we can give support to those middle school kids to help them with, excuse me, students, not children, not baby goats, but if we can give those help to those students, we can help, help start closing those achievement gaps. Do we need a P.I.O.? I think we need a P.I.O. We need somebody to tell the positive stories that go on. We didn't, I didn't know we had kids that went to the spelling bee. That's a positive story that got out. I don't know that any press was there to cover the robotics competition that we had at Norcom a few weeks ago. I don't think that positive story got out. A P.I.O. is going to be a positive storyteller, point blank. They're going to know how to work a room, they're going to know how to work a story, and it's not about working a story, it's about putting your stories out there that you want, rather than hoping the Virginia Pilot picks up on a good positive piece. So at this point, I'm happy with 146 going. When we get to that point where we have to prioritize, then we can go around the table and make those cuts. But I don't think that's the discussion for right now.
This is just phase one.
Okay.
Part one.
All right. Let's go, I added number four. Now, here's the important one. Unless somebody decided that some problem that's come up, and they need to go to a closed session for, we don't have a closed session scheduled. I had it there just in case. So we have no closed session to go into. Next thing I would like to do, unless there are any more business coming for this board, this meeting is adjourned.